All right, so it's 7:30, so I will call this meeting to order and we will start with the pledge. Joe, you have your flag?
Yeah, I do. Hold on, give me a second. Give me one second.
There we go.
Yep.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the very public which extends all nation under God indivisible, omnipotent and just. Thanks, Joe.
Yep.
All right. I will do my little spiel regarding information about this remote electronic public meeting. On March 14th, 2020, in response to the COVID-19 pandemic and in an effort to reduce the risk of transmission by virtue of attendance at public meetings, Governor Lamont suspended in-person open meeting requirements and permits conducting public meetings remotely by conference call, video conference, or other technology. A copy of the full text of Executive Order Number 7B1 is available for review on the Town of Monroe's website, www.mounroct.org. Accordingly, the Monroe Board of Education has selected Zoom as the preferred technology of application to conduct remote public meetings in compliance with state law. This technology will permit up to, and here's our new change, it's 500 members of the public to participate in real time in the public meeting via computer, tablet, smartphone, or telephone via the access information set forth on this meeting agenda. It is highly recommended that any interested participant download and utilize Zoom software applications prior to the commencement of the meeting. Each meeting may have unique participation information, including access code and live link. Please be sure that you're accessing the correct information for the correct meeting. Lastly, any member of the public who desires to submit written information relative to business set forth on the agenda may do so up to one hour in advance of the meeting via electronic mail to the email address set forth on this meeting agenda. Notice is hereby given that this remote electronic public meeting shall, one, permit the public to view, listen, and, when permitted by the agenda and/or the chairman, participate in real time in the meeting; two, be recorded and posted to the Board of Education website within seven days; three, be made available to the public within a reasonable time. In addition to the standard parliamentary procedure as outlined on this agenda, the following special rule shall apply to all participants. Please mute your microphone so as to reduce background noise at any time you are not speaking. Prior to speaking on any occasion, each speaker shall clearly state their name and the title for the record. The use of chat features are prohibited and will not be considered during this meeting if in use. Notice is hereby given that only 500 participants may access this remote electronic public meeting at any one time. Access is granted solely by Zoom technology on a first-access basis and is not within control of the Monroe Board of Education. Thank you. First item up is a roll call to make sure that we have actually a quorum. George King. All right. Shannon Minako.
Here.
Thank you. What do you got? Alan Bagliavella.
Here.
Jerry Stevens.
Yeah.
Jeff Valcino.
Here.
David Ferris.
Here.
Christine Casalia. And Nick Kabor.
I'm here, sorry.
That's okay, Christine. Okay, so Christine is here and Nick is here, so I think we're just missing George. Perfect, so we have a quorum. Thank you. Our first item on our agenda is our recognition of our 2020 retirees. Joe, would you like to go through the list? I mean, we normally have a presentation and a little gift to give them. I'm going to assume that you are taking care of getting that to them. You're on mute, Joe.
Thanks. We are, and the big end-of-year gift every year is always the plate for all of the retirees, so those will be coming. Unfortunately, they're not ready yet because the company that does them has been shut down for quite a while, so they're kind of backlogged. But we will get them to all of our retirees. You know, at the end of every school year, we celebrate our retirees either at an end-of-the-year district party and then again at our June board meeting. Unfortunately, we weren't able to hold our party this year, and we're going to have to celebrate our retirees virtually this year, but hopefully they'll come back and join us next year at our retiree party. We'll hopefully just be that much bigger of a party next year. This in no way diminishes the impact that our retirees have had on our students, staff, and families. We have retirees, I mean, you look at all the years there that encompass more than 300 years of combined service, so I wish each of them the best that retirement brings. I want to thank Sheila Casinelli and Jen Parcell made a beautiful video that we shared with the district a couple of weeks ago. It's a really nice tribute to the 13 people being recognized, so if you don't mind indulging me, it's a few minutes long, but I think they've earned it, so I'd like to share it with everyone now.
When you look at the pictures of the 13 retirees from Monroe this year, you see familiar faces, people we've known throughout our own careers. They're the custodian, security guard, nurse, secretary, teacher, and administrator who greeted you each day. With over 300 years of experience with the Monroe Public Schools, your legacy will live on in all the lives you have touched. Thank you for everything you did to support the students, parents, and colleagues of the Monroe Public Schools. I wish each of you a long, healthy, and rewarding retirement. You have definitely earned it.
Cindy Booker has been with the Monroe Public Schools for 24 years, starting as a teacher at Stepney School and moving on to our K-5 mathematics coordinator. Cindy's enthusiasm and passion for teaching will be long remembered by students and teachers. Her invaluable support and leadership of our elementary math program will be greatly missed by all the elementary schools. Lillian Sispra has been a foreign language teacher in the Monroe Public Schools for 22 years, first running at Jockey Hollow and then moving to Masick High School. A department member shared, "Lillian's knowledge of multiple languages and of language acquisition will be missed." She has been an educator not only dedicated to her students but to self-improvement throughout her career. Gitan Janest has worked for the Monroe Public Schools for 28 years as a custodian at Masick High School. Throughout his career, Gitan has supported the sports teams with striping the fields. Additionally, he provided a fun and clean atmosphere in the building while supporting students and staff alike. Thank you, Gitan, for your years of service. Mary Ann Gentile has been with the Monroe Public Schools for 36 years. Her administrator shared, "Mary Ann is one of the many Gentiles to teach in the Monroe Public Schools, carrying on the family legend." Mary Ann has been the heartbeat of the 4th grade team for many years, and she will be greatly missed. Jennifer Heitzke is a 32-year veteran of Monroe Public Schools. A colleague shared, "Jenna was the teacher who brought the wingman program to Stepney, pairing up kindergarten students with their grade-five wingmen. The two groups meet periodically throughout the year in the student mentor program." Jean Herring has been with Fawn Hollow School for 28 years, starting as a kindergarten teacher and then moving on to becoming a reading recovery teacher. Jean has been a part of the reading team since then. Jean has inspired a love of learning and especially reading in the hearts of countless Fawn Hollow students. Her warm smile and friendly hello at morning arrival duty will be missed, as well as her organization of payday breakfast for staff. A 19-year veteran of Monroe Public Schools, Joanne Higgins has worked at both Chalk Hill and Jockey Hollow. Joanne's administrator shared, "Joanne's students will always remember her positive energy and enthusiasm, as well as the way she sang and danced while teaching mathematics." Becky Cosisco has been with Monroe for 28 years, starting as a teacher at Stepney School and achieving Teacher of the Year. Becky moved on to being the Assistant Principal at Jockey Hollow before moving on to being principal at Fawn Hollow School. Jack Cecalini says, "Becky Cosisco is one of the most intelligent, humble, quiet leaders I have had the privilege with which to work. Becky consistently brings a positive outlook and attitude even when faced with the most difficult situations. She embodies what it is to be an educator, a leader, a mentor, and a friend. I am a better person for having known her." Doris Lakayo has been a world language teacher at Masick High School for the past 22 years. Lisa Peterson shares, "Throughout her career, Doris has seen many changes in instruction and curriculum and has taught many levels of Spanish, both in Monroe and in Bridgeport where she began her career. I hope that she is soon able to realize her plans to travel during retirement." Nancy Mazacola has been with the Monroe Public Schools for 25 and a half years, starting as a special education aide in in-school suspension care at Chalk Hill. Nancy moved on to central office as a secretary and then the administrative assistant. Nancy has worked for several different administrators in her 25-plus years in Monroe. She is always willing to lend a hand and help out with any project. As the first person you see, Nancy greets all those entering central office with a warm and welcoming smile. She will be missed. Kay Moser was with Monroe Public Schools for 30 and a half years. She began her teaching career as a special education teacher at Masick High School, and then over the years she moved on to become the Director of Student Support Services. As a true advocate for all students, Kay Moser led Monroe's Special Education Department for 15 years. With 166 staff members reporting to her daily, Kay's advice was to always do what was right for kids. Even in retirement, she has continued her work of supporting young adults with special needs. Joanne Perrigee has been with Monroe for 13 years as the school nurse at Stepney School. As in any school, the school nurse is the backbone of the building, and Stepney School is no different. Joanne can also be viewed as the backbone of the district as she serves as our nursing coordinator for the Monroe Public Schools. In his 27 years with Monroe Public Schools, Steve Spenberg has worn a couple of different hats. He started as the head of food services, left us for a bit, and then returned as part of Masick's security team. Joe Coggs has shared, "Steve and I started at Masick in 1986. The difference is, I was a freshman student and he was the head of food service." Julia Strong added, "When I was a senior on the basketball team in 1990, Steve was the head of food service, and he said if we won the state championship, he would make us a cake as tall as our 6'2" center. We did, and he did." We wish we could congratulate all of you in person this year, but we look forward to seeing the class of 2020 retirees at the Water View in June of 2021.
Wow, thank you. That was an amazing video by Sheila and Jen. Great job. And we are sorry that we can't do this in person because it is a nice night to bring everybody up on camera individually, present the plate to them, and also the little reception we have beforehand, but that all because of COVID could not happen. So we would like to invite you back once we do have, you know, maybe in the fall when we're hopefully back in having meetings and be able to present those plates to you. If they come in sooner, Joe will get them to you, but if not, maybe we can do something in the fall to recognize you all at a board meeting. But we do thank you for your years of service to Monroe Public Schools. We're eternally grateful to each of you in what you've done for our school system, and we're sorry to see you go and wish you well on the next chapter of your journey, wherever that leads you. Joe, do you have anything else you wanted to say?
No, you hit it on the head. I really, it's amazing when you look at, you know, how many different areas of our schools, all of these folks, you know, play such an integral role, and we are definitely, we're definitely going to miss them, and I agree with you. I hope we can come together and celebrate them in person like they deserve. So this is just a little something from us for now, but, you know, congratulations to all of them. I really, I hope all of you have a wonderful retirement.
Great, thank you.
And the first thing you can do in retirement is stay on and watch the rest of the board meeting, but okay if you don't.
If I could just say one quick thing, so many of you, I loved watching that video, and I'm grateful that that was put together. So many of you have touched my own kids and the kids of our district and had such an impact on my own children and everybody here. Just thank you, and I really hope that you're enjoying your retirement, but not so much that you won't come back for us to be able to do this in person when we can, because I would really love to see you guys and be able to do that and honor you in that way like you deserve.
Absolutely, and actually, I was laughing during the Joanne Higgins one with dancing and singing to her students for math, because both my girls had Joanne Higgins, but math that's dumb, and that's exactly what she did, so I was chuckling during that part.
During the video, a lot of those teachers got my kids, and they got my kids, and probably a lot of parents can relate to that, you know? It means so much to the kids, and it means so much to us parents, and your work, it's not easy, but it touched so many people, it means a really lot.
Absolutely. Does any of the other board members have anything they'd like to say?
Just thank you and good luck.
Great, thanks, David. Anybody else? All right, hearing none, well, you guys, you're more than welcome to stay on for our meeting, but if you'd like to drop off, we do understand that and appreciate it, and thank you again. All right, we will move on to the consent agenda. Excuse me, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, and I'll take Jerry as a second. Joe, you're off mute, okay, good. Do you want to discuss item C, which is the appointment?
Yeah, I'm really happy and proud to, you know, appoint Mike Crowley as the interim principal of Jockey Hollow in the STEM Academy. Mike interned at Masick way back in the late 90s. He started teaching in Thomaston before coming back to Masick in 2001. He has taught grades 8 through 12 at both STEM and Masick in English Language Arts. He's also directed a number of art plays at Masick. In 2005, Mike became the Department Chair of Fine Arts, and the following year, the Department Chair of English. In 2009, he was appointed the Teaching Dean of Students at Jockey Hollow and the English Language Arts Curriculum Coordinator for middle through high school. He has since been the instructional leader of English Language Arts 6 through 12 since then. Mike has been extremely instrumental in the development of Monroe's vision of the graduate, and I'm very confident that Mike will carry forward the mission of our schools, making our middle school a place where students feel valued and teachers take risks and the community feels welcome. So I'm happy to announce Mike as the interim principal at Jockey Hollow.
Great, thank you, Joe. Well, do I have any discussion by any of the board members? We'll just go around. Shannon?
No discussion.
Okay. Dave?
No.
Jerry?
A great appointment. Nope, all set.
Great. Alan?
All set.
Okay. Christine?
Nope, congrats, Mike.
Nick?
All set.
And Jeff?
All set, thank you.
Great, thank you. As there's no further discussion, then we will move on to a vote. Shannon?
I vote yes, congratulations.
Well, I for the consent agenda side. Dave?
Aye.
Jerry?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
I'm an aye. I take it George is still not on? All right, so the ayes have it. Congratulations, Mike, and to your position, we're happy to have you aboard.
Thanks very much, everybody. I'm really excited about it.
Great. All right, we will move on to our reports of our committees and liaisons. We do not have any Masick reps. I don't know if anybody has any other committee reports. If you do, just unmute and tell us. Maybe somebody?
CES met.
Oh, okay, go ahead, Alan.
CES met, committee met a couple of weeks ago, and just briefly, they mentioned that they're going to be part of the state opening committee. They said one of the problems that they see is there's a lot of like parallel efforts with the towns and the state not coordinating very well. And they also just wanted boards of ed to be aware of how welcoming they are to candidates, potential like candidates with diverse backgrounds, like they mentioned the curriculum. You know, they want to make sure that we have like diversity of curriculum, not only white authors, and is our website welcoming, that sort of thing.
Thank you, Alan. Anybody else have any? And are they working? I'm sorry, Alan, to go back to you a quick second. Are they going to be working with the different, the different boards, well, the different districts in the CES region to accomplish those items? What's their plan?
That's the goal.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the goal. It's, they're starting to put it together now. They just said, you know, it's got to be coordinated, because right now towns are acting separately from the state, and the state's got to, you know, get everything together.
All right, perfect. Does anybody else have any committee reports? And maybe not, because we're at the end of the year, so not many committees are still in. Still in. All right. Well, we will move on to public participation. If you wish to be, to speak, if you unmute, state your name, and then mute again, I will call people to offer their comments in the order that I had written their names down, so if anybody would like to participate, please let me know now. I'm sorry. Well, Teresa? Sure.
I would like to participate as well.
Name, please.
Anand Virraghav.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Both Joe, Shannon, and I, before we go into it, did receive many emails over the past couple of weeks from various parents with regarding mostly about the music cut that we have on our list. That cut will be coming off our list, so that is no longer in play, but we did get many. Joe, how many emails do you think? Probably at least 10, I would say, right?
Yeah, we have...
Joe has them off.
Eight, and then I actually, I think I just received one just a few minutes ago, so nine.
Right. So we had about nine letters from various students and also parents throughout the district concerned about the music cut, which would yield a cut to our 5th grade music program because of different things we will discuss further in the agenda. That cut will no longer, like I said, be in place and will be coming off, so we will, I guess, not read all those letters unless you'd like to read them, since that's really already been taken care of.
I don't, it's up to you. I don't know that we need to if the reduction's going to be removed.
Okay, perfect. Teresa, you chimed in first, so you are the first one up, and just remember to state your address for the record, please.
Sure. Teresa Olliar. My address is 133 Old Crystal Drive. So I had something I want to say, but since we just started the meeting, I will say a quick congratulations to Michael Crowley, even though I'm very sad and disappointed and wish you were still teaching English at Masick or STEM, and so I guess yay, promotion for you, but sadness for the rest of us. So, hope you'll do great, you'll be great. I'm full confidence. Still sad. The reason I wanted to make a public comment today was in regards to the curriculum that is on the agenda for today, and it is diverse in history. I am a parent rep on the Curriculum Council this year, my second year being a parent rep. I found it a wonderful experience, and I've gotten to know a lot more of our district educators and to really see the process of education in our town. I missed the first Board of Ed meeting when it got presented, and I did go back and listen to it, because I did see that it had been pulled from the second agenda, and I have to say that I truthfully was, I found the concern and some of the comments completely disrespectful to our educators of our district. I found insulting, really, to our educators to think that the people who we have entrusted our children to and with daily cannot make a curriculum and write a curriculum for this course, and to insinuate that there would be any sort of inappropriate materials or things that would have some sort of bias, as opposed to using primary documents, which my middle schooler 100% understands what that means. And so I would hope that everybody that we are on this call with understands what a primary source document is and why they are so important, even if they're from voices we have not normally heard from previously. And I think that, you know, it's passed through Curriculum Council as designed by our instructional leaders, and I would say that the year 2020 is only half over, and I hope we have some clear hindsight already. This course got brought to us months ago before COVID, before civil unrest, and I would hope that we are examining this as a June 2020 date, and perhaps maybe re-watch that initial meeting of Board of Ed, because I think that there was some very important statements made by our educators during the presentation, and that was before current events. So perhaps, you know, go back, near the one hour and 18 minutes, so you don't have to go through the whole meeting. And I would say that there have been courses over local times in local communities for decades that have not had a singular textbook, and I don't think it should be an issue. I took a course in Trumbull High 25 years ago where we read all sorts of different narratives and speeches and insights about the Vietnam War, about World War II, about civil rights, and that was in the 90s. So I would hope that in 2020, Masick, one door over, can start to be able to listen to some other, maybe not heard from, voices and how important it is. And I would remind everybody that the climate survey that came out, again, was 42% of our Masick non-white population has said that there have been offensive or mean things said to them, specifically in regards to race or color. And while teenagers are mean, and I'm sure it's 100% of all Masick students have heard something mean at some time, I find it disturbing how high that percentage is specifically to race. And I know it's not a Masick issue, it's across the thing, so I'm not in any way saying that I think Masick has a higher-than-normal issue, but so that is really, I would just say, I would hope the Board of Ed looks at other high schools in our area, looks at curriculum, perhaps looks at our own curriculum that we offer already, our courses we offer already that do not use one textbook, and understand that we use a variety of different resources at this point. And so that is, I just want to make sure that I was said, because I was completely upset after being on Curriculum Council and watching our educators and how hard they work for $0, as we saw the curriculum was going to... was going to cost our district $0. So kudos to our district for at least finding a way to bring courses and curriculum to our, our students. So I hope, I would implore the Board of Ed to pass the curriculum as presented by our, our instructional leader.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Teresa. We will move on. Anand, is that how you say it? I'm sorry.
It's Anand.
Anand, okay, you're up.
Thank you all for having me. I, in all my years.
You just need to state your, you need to just, excuse me, state your name and address for the record. I'm sorry.
So my name is Anand Virraghav, and I live at 33 Perry Drive. So I never imagined myself speaking in front of the Monroe Board of Education, but I'm doing this today because I recently learned about the plans about cutting music for the fifth graders. Now, although I know these plans are no longer being explored, I do believe it is important to discuss their premises, because this does seem to be a reoccurring issue in our town. In 2014, I graduated from Mastic and had been playing with the Monroe Strings Program since 2005 as a fourth grader. I had done everything within music, being a soloist, a leader, and part of the Strings Classes Executive Board. The next step in my musical journey was to join UConn's orchestra, even though I was not a music major. Having been a member of the local youth orchestra, the GBYO, I was happy to enrich my musical experience in college. None of this could have happened if I had never enrolled in the music classes at Monroe Public Schools. When I performed at the UConn Orchestra in college, we would occasionally travel to schools and perform with the high school orchestras. My conductor would encourage local parents to continue supporting the arts, and he remarked that whenever he visits a new town or city, he can always tell what the school's music program is like. A vibrant, prosperous settlement always had a good music and arts program, while a more poor, rundown area tended to have a lackluster arts program, if at all. I've been proud to call Monroe my home, as it has been for all 24 years I've been alive. And I know it is a town with many great people and a good school district. The sports teams at Monroe bring home many awards from year to year. With that, I see there is no reason to cut the music program, which is also a very rewarding experience, be it now or in the future. In 2014, my senior year, I had the honor of being able to play with the Western Connecticut Regional Music Festival, which was for high school students to take part in a weekend music activity and perform together. When I was there, I noticed that certain school districts, such as those in Westport, Fairfield, and Trumbull, sent dozens of students to the festival, and some even provided buses for their students. Meanwhile, Mastic only sent three students. The districts I described are all competent in sports, academics, and the arts. There is no reason for Monroe to not be able to balance the three. Numerous studies have shown that students raised in artistic backgrounds perform better in their academics. In my youth orchestra, for example, the aforementioned GBYO, my conductor once proudly announced to the audience during a concert that the average GBYO student's SAT and ACT scores, which were anonymously submitted to him, were much higher than the national average. Arts have an aspect of community building as well as life-enriching. Giving students a proper education at a younger age is paramount to their success. Although I'm proud to call Monroe my home, it would truly be a shame to see the music program and the other arts programs suffer more than they already have. From time after time, they are the first on the table to be cut when budget issues arise. For Monroe Public Schools, continue to make drastic cuts to the arts programs, and even though I know that's not happening now, I realize it is a possibility in the future, I think it would truly lead to this town losing a part of its soul. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your comments.
Thank you for having me.
Okay, we will move on to item number seven, and Jill, you are up with the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Let me do a little screen sharing again here. So the first thing I wanted to prep here was the, the proposed reductions for the 2021 budget. This has not changed, but as we've, as we've discussed on here, you know, we're hopeful that this will change after, after some further business tonight. But, you know, so far, this list hasn't changed. I just took some of the colors off it, but the, these are the reductions that we've discussed so far. And I've grouped them into the three phases that they came in. We had the first phase, which was the reduction from the Board of Education. The second phase, which was the reduction from, made at the first selectmen's level. And then the final reduction made at the Board of Finance level, that Phase Three. You know, as, as you said, Donna, we are, you know, anticipating, you know, another meeting before the end of the month to finalize all of our, you know, any other future negotiations that we might have. I'm hopeful that, you know, the, the proposed MOU with the MEA and, you know, the other negotiations will allow us to remove, you know, several of the items on this list. So you're kind of, we're kind of in a holding pattern right now, but we'll, you know, I know we're going to vote on this. Probably we'll look to establish another meeting next week to, as we got to get moving on it before July 1, another meeting next week to, to finalize that list.
Joe, do you want to discuss that when we do vote on item number 10A? What change will that, that necessitate so that people are aware of what items are in fact coming off this list? Because I don't want people to be confused. As we had people talk about music, and, you know, they still see that there. So if you can just talk about if, you know, when we get to that point of that vote, how that changes this?
Yeah, thanks, Donna. It's a good, that's a really good idea. The 10A is the memorandum of understanding with the, with the Monroe Education Association, our teachers' union. You know, I'm hopeful that, you know, that gets approved tonight. I know it has already been ratified by the teachers' union. That is a, that is a memorandum of understanding that provides for, where the teachers have agreed to take three furlough days, and we will save some substantial money. With that, I don't want to give, I don't have the exact dollars in front of me, but with it, we are confident that we will be able to save the, the, I'm sorry, remove the layoffs of people already in positions. So that would include our, our marketing reduction at the high school, our culinary reduction at the high school. Obviously, that would bring back the culinary supplies. Our district-wide music position, which would help stave off the elimination of the Grade Five music program with Band and Strings. And then two of our reading teachers, which would, which would save positions there at the elementary level of two of our elementary school teachers. So those are, you know, of all these positions, those positions that I just mentioned are all positions where we have actual bodies in place that would, that would lose position, that would, that would be, you know, laid off. And we're trying to avoid that. So we are hopeful to, to recoup that, and depending on, you know, future negotiations, some other things on here as well.
Great. Thanks, Joe. So just to reiterate, that's marketing, culinary, the music, and two reading teachers. Does anybody have any questions from the board? I'll just go around. Shannon? All right, Dave?
No.
Oh, sorry, I couldn't find my mute button with this screen here. Sorry, no questions.
Okay, Dave, you said no also. Jerry?
Nope.
Alan?
Yeah, just one quick question. Are we down as school psychologists?
No. No, Alan. If, if you look up here, you see this Monroe L. School Psych, and it's a negative number. That's a, that's a negative, because we're adding, it's a negative from a negative, so it's, it's an addition. Yeah, it's a good question. No, this was a position that was not budgeted for, for this year, that we filled, because we needed a school psych down at Monroe Elementary. And so we did that, but we had to, we had to work that into our, our budget reduction. So we had to make up in other areas to make sure that we had someone covered there.
Got it.
Christine?
No.
Nick?
No, just thank you so much to our teachers, and I know we'll talk more about this later on.
Absolutely. And Jeff?
No questions.
Great. Thank you so much. All right, Joe, continue on.
I'll let Ron jump in here now. Let me, I'll stop sharing my screen. Ron, let me know if you need me to, to share anything. But Ron was going to walk us through the, the finance, the finance update.
So, Joe, I don't need you to share the screen unless any board member would like the finance update on the screen, if they don't have it available.
Good.
Okay, so. Ron, I'm gonna, I have two questions on the spreadsheet you create, so I'll just put that out there before you start, if you want to, I don't know if you want to put that up.
Okay. Which one, Nick? The year-to-date projected budget?
Yeah, not the munis one, the one that you make in Excel.
Yes, okay. So actually, I wanted to jump straight to that. Unless anyone has any questions on the May Activity Fund statement, I'd, I'd like to jump straight to the year-to-date budget report, which is more up to date. So I don't.
Yep, that's, go ahead.
Okay, so, Joe, do you want, can you share that? It's the second, it's number two?
Just give me one second. I think the one of the few that I have in hard copy, so I didn't pull it up. I'll pull it up right now.
While Joe's doing that, I can, I can speak to it a little bit. It's, it's showing a projected deficit of 315,000 currently. And again, the big difference, you know, we had the balloon, the teacher's balloon payment, payroll was a couple, was a week back now. So we were, I was able to tighten up the, the numbers largely as a result of that. So Nick, if you have your question?
Yeah, the first one is right here on the last page. The miscellaneous expenses jumped. Is that COVID-related?
It, it, it is COVID-related indirectly.
All right, so, because that was 30 at the last.
Yeah, so it's, the additional 70 is, is related to a, a contract that, that we, it's, we have a meeting set up next week with a vendor that handles services for the district that we're going to be ironing some loose ends out with. I guess that's.
I got it.
So there's, there's a potential exposure of 70 there.
Okay. And then, Joe, would it be possible for you to scroll to page two of the spreadsheet? I had a question on, yeah, so under Central Office, see the office personnel and management line? I'm assuming that is other, that's non-certified staff in Central Office, so the encumbrances, there's a big 48, 960 projected deficit for the remaining, like, 10 days. Is that salary-related?
This person. It, it is, Nick, yes.
So is that OT, or is that just, is that just, that's the only one that jumped? I know the teacher ones we talked about, that we have to go back and do the transfers at the end of the year in some of the different schools. I got that. But this one here, I, because there's salaries in the certified, but this one is.
Yeah, and again, a lot of it was the way things kind of worked out and progressed this year with, I'm going to say, staff changes, stipends, with the finance director position changing and overtime during budget season. So if you, if you look at line one, that's where, you know, you see it's under budget, and that was largely the result of the, of the finance director position.
Okay, so if we take the certified admins in Central Office and you net it against that office personnel and management, you're still under in that. The finance director difference is in there?
Yeah.
Okay.
There were, there was a lot of administrative time, and it wasn't all budget and finance director related, but that was, that was a good portion of it.
Yeah, that makes total sense. It just, compared to the other teacher ones, it jumped out to me because of where the line, the subject, the object code it was under. So that answers it great. Thank you so much. Thank you, Donna.
No problem. Thank you. Ron, you can go on, or does anybody else have any questions? All right.
Okay, so I, I'll jump to the communications from the auditors. A couple of things, I didn't want to, so what I did was I, after discussing this with the Board of Finance and the, the auditors, it was, as, as the COVID-19 situation increased, I don't know if you recall, they were supposed to come to a board meeting back in February, and then that got pushed, and then COVID happened. And so what I, it was becoming increasingly clear it was going to get hard to, hard to get them to a meeting. So I had them prepare a presentation to, to the Board of Finance and to, for the Board of Education in lieu of them being able to attend. And it was really just to walk through, now these, the town's CAFER is almost a year old at this point, so the numbers are probably stale. But the big thing that comes out of the CAFER is, are the recommendations you get from the auditors. So I don't know if, I also want to make it clear that the town's CAFER is available on the town's website, so that can be viewed at any time by anyone. And I think there's about 10 years' worth of CAFERs on there. The presentation just kind of walks you through the CAFER. I can certainly, I mean, if the board would like, I can walk through the presentation. Probably not necessary if you don't intend on going to look at the CAFER yourself, so.
Do you want to just give us the highlights, and if there's any areas of significant, you know, deficiencies that we as the.
So, yeah, so again, that's not in the presentation itself, Donna, but if you go to the, the last two pages of the audit recommendation letters, that's the part that relates to the Board of Education. And Linda and I actually have a meeting, I'm going to be setting up a meeting either later this week or early next week to discuss with the audit manager the recommendations. And I anticipate being able to clear all the recommendations, with the exception of the cafeteria revenue and cash receipts recommendation. So the payroll recommendation, the budget recommendation, and the budget recommendations, there's actually two. I'm going to, I'm going to, I think I'm going to be able to clear just with a phone conversation and discussing with the audit manager. The budget issue, we've already taken care of that. The number two, you're reporting on a monthly basis, you know, unless there's something Linda and I are both missing, and you guys can chime in now. The last recommendation, I think everything gets reported to you guys on a monthly basis, so we're not exactly sure what, what they meant there. The payroll issue, I, I don't, again, I need to find out exactly what they were talking about, because there aren't that many manual payroll checks that get handed out. So again, I, I don't think it's anything that, you know, shouldn't be resolved with a phone call and a discussion. The cafeteria issue, myself and, I don't know who else is on the meeting. We're going to be meeting with SEDEXO next week, actually, and we're, we're going to be ironing out a couple of things related to specifically the Mastic Cafeteria Fund, and we'll be addressing that also.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I've been looking at it. There's not many significant, I would call them significant, issues within it, because some of them, you're right, are already addressed. And I agree with you on the second one with regard to the budget. We are, we do see the reports monthly, so.
Yeah, so I can entertain any questions related to that, if anyone's got anything.
It's almost like they had to find something to write, like, they couldn't just say you're doing a good job, so.
Well, I, I spent about 20 minutes talking with, with Linda this afternoon, and she was, she was pretty upset with some of the, yeah, she, she didn't, you know, she didn't feel some of them were deserved. We'll leave it at that. So we'll iron things out next week. It's not a, I don't see them as a big deal. And the cafeteria one, there are, there are, there is something, I, I agree with that one, and we just have, we'll, you know, we'll find a, the proper procedures to put in place to tighten. to tighten that up.
Great, thank you, does anybody else have any questions, Dave?
Ron, it's Dave Ferris. Number one, thanks for all your hard work on this, going back to the deficit on current year budget, number one, it's much better than the 1.2 million we were told back in January, so thanks for, for all that hard work, and that 315, that is within what the town is going to assist us in covering, correct?
That is correct, and, and I can't take credit for a lot of that budget, that deficit reduction, I think unfortunately, a lot of that was a byproduct of the situation we're in, but.
I understand, but, but you and Linda and that whole team have done an extraordinary job, so thank you.
Thanks.
Does anybody else have any questions for Ron? Alright, hearing none, Joe, we're back to you. Thank you, Ron, we appreciate all your hard work with this.
Thanks, Ron. I just wanted to take a minute just to thank everyone who made all of our end-of-year celebrations so special for our, for our kids, from the stepping-up ceremonies at the elementary schools, to the eighth-grade celebration, to high school graduation, everything was absolutely fantastic, and there's so many people to thank, I know I'm going to forget some, but, you know, I would be remiss if I didn't try anyway, so, you know, the principals and their administrative teams, I mean, they did so much planning to cover so many logistics to get these things off the ground and running, we, all of our staff who helped coordinate, and then showed up to give our kids such a, such a great send-off at the high school, well, actually at all the schools, the police department was involved in, you know, whether it was parades at the schools, or, you know, ferrying our kids, you know, leading our kids down to graduation at the high school, our PTOs and the throngs of volunteers that they got to help coordinate all the logistics, like, you know, decorating Route 111 from Fireman's Field all the way down to the high school, and then decorating the high school parking lot, it was just, it was really amazing, and, you know, it was definitely unconventional, but something our kids and our families will never forget, I, from every, I've heard from parents at every school, and every, every parent has had nothing but positive things to say about our end-of-year celebrations. There's one person, you know, I don't think she's on tonight, and at some point we'll have to, we'll have to recognize her, I think she's been recognized for things before, but, you know, I call her a Monroe Patriot, that's Karen Kulp-Coffee, who is just at about every possible event at the end of the year, including the parades for our senior athletes who didn't have an opportunity to have a real senior night, I can't even begin to guess how many pictures Karen took this spring and posted for the whole district to enjoy on Facebook, so, she's awesome. I apologize, I know I'm missing people, but it was really such a huge undertaking that, that so many people had a hand in, and I really, I just wanted to thank, thank you everybody for that. My next piece is for Ian Lowell, actually, we learned, I learned the other day that, congratulations to Ian, Ian was recognized with the Pamela Belmore Gardner Social Studies Leadership Award. The purpose of this award is to recognize an administrator who has been supportive of social studies education in elementary, middle, and height, not, elementary, middle and high school settings. I think what's, you know, what I find most impressive is that to be eligible for this award, you have to be nominated by your staff, and I think it just speaks volumes of Ian's leadership, that the teachers in our history and social studies department thought highly enough of him to go through the process of nominating him for this award, so, congratulations, Ian.
Thank you.
You got it. And my last piece is even, is very short, and that is just, you know, as we look at previous years, and what is, what is on the agenda for future meetings, one of the one, one of the ones was just to poll the board members for areas that you would like to learn more about, so, polling the board for Board Professional Development, if you, if the board members would like, I would just ask you to please send Jack Cecchellini an email just with some, just with some different things that you would like to see coming down the road, I'm sure you're going to be hearing plenty about reopening committees, you know, we could probably do some pretty cool things, you know, in special education with Darlene and Jen, and even probably, probably recruit Alan for some of that as well, there's a lot of other big things coming down the pipe in terms of, you know, education moving forward, there's going to be a big emphasis on, you know, social, emotional learning, that was already an emphasis in the state last year, and, you know, it might have, we just went through with COVID, I think it's going to, it's going to be even bigger, so, if you have any ideas that you would like to have us look into a little bit further, I think we try to do one topic a month for some kind of Board Professional Development, if we can get back on that cycle, you know, back in September, that would be great. So again, if you just send, if you could just send your items to Jack, that would be great.
Great, thank you, yes, and once a month is, we have, so, I, I think you even already have some top, great topics, so, if, you know, others can, you know, send out other topics that you're interested in, and that we feel, that we feel like we need to be better educated on for our positions as Board of Education members, that would be great. Alright, we will move on then, are you all done, Joe, and does any, so are you all done? Okay. Oh, does anybody have any questions for Joe before we move on to presentations? Alright, so then we will move on to item number eight, which is presentations, which is our reopening committee framework, so I will turn it over to whoever's doing that presentation.
So, I'm going to get it started, and then I'm going to actually pull up another presentation in a second, that's an offshoot of, of this presentation, I'll kind of give you the, the big global picture, and then you'll see where it all fits in in a minute, so, I'll be presenting, I believe, Kevin, Mike, Ian, might be presenting, Julia Strong, Kelly Spencer, Laura Marr, I think we're, I think all of them, and if I miss someone, they'll, they'll chime in. So, I wanted to just talk a little bit, I just wanted to, you know, we're still waiting on the, on the, on the state to release their guidance, I know Alan was talking about this a few minutes ago, about reopening in Connecticut, it is, it is a little frustrating, I know there are, you know, we did not get the summer school guidelines until very late, and I'm told that the, the state guidelines for the fall are supposed to be coming out hopefully at some point this week, but, you know, I think Alan hit the nail on the head when he gave his, you know, when he talked about the work being done at CES, because, you know, everyone's struggling with, you know, not wanting to duplicate work that's already being done, and there's kind of work being done at the regional level, at the state level, the regional level, and the local level, but, you know, we've got it, we've got to get moving, and we are moving on there, and I just want to kind of give the board a bit of an update, I'll give the, the overview, and then I'll ask the administrative team to talk a little bit about where we are in terms of curriculum and instruction, but, you know, right now, what does the fall look like? Nobody knows. I've heard all kinds of different things, you know, they're talking about coming back is full-distance learning, you know, like we, we just were, that has gotten a little bit quieter lately, I've also heard of full return, that, you know, we're going to get back into, we're going to get back into classrooms in a, you know, full scale, and then I've also heard a lot of comments about some sort of a hybrid model where, and there's been a lot of different things about that, bring back 50% of the kids, so, half the kids come on Monday, Tuesday, the other half come on Wednesday, Thursday, half come on Friday, and then the next week, the same thing with the other half coming on Friday, or double sessions, half the kids come in the morning, half the kids come in the afternoon, obviously major implications to, to transportation. Another one that was gaining some traction for a while was bringing back our younger students four days a week, and then having them go distance learning, spreading them out throughout the district, so they would use, you know, you know, if you were to say K through five, they would use all five buildings in the, in the district, and then they'd be home for distance learning one day, and you'd bring back, you know, six through 12 the other day, and they'd be on, and the older kids, presumably because they're more independent, would be on distance learning, so, you know, like I said, we can't wait for the state to make a decision, so we have to be prepared, so, you know, we've started to do some work. As an administrative team, we've created a focus group to look at reopening, and really have hit the ground running, I really want to give a lot of credit to the administrative team. We have used a framing document developed by Ed Advance, that was developed by Ed Advance in cooperation with a number of stakeholders, superintendents, principals, teachers, parents, parents, transportation folks, whatever, that, their, Ed, the Ed Advance framework identifies 30 different topics that, that we've since, and you'll see it in a minute, that we've categorized into six different, six different domains. The administrative team is also, you know, depending on the level, have gone out and sent surveys to families, students, and staff to say, hey, what worked well this year? If we have to go into some kind of distance learning mode, what worked well, what can we do better, what are we going to have to work on? I'm meeting with the Fairfield County and Western Connecticut superintendents every week to discuss re-entries, and then starting next week, we're going to look to, we've already done a lot of work as the, you know, kind of the steering committee on the reopening framework, but starting next week, we're going to convene the entire committee, we're going to look to do 11:30 on Wednesdays for like an hour, just working in subcommittees that will fall into place when you see the domains, and, you know, run those weekly as we go over stuff, so. Oh, why isn't this moving? Oh, there it goes. Alright, so the, so, we were looking at five domains, two, I'm sorry, six domains, two of those six domains revolve around, you know, what are we, what are we going to do, and what are the impacts, how are we, you know, how are we going to teach, and what are the impacts to curriculum and instruction? So, we're looking at curriculum instruction, and then logistics, how are we going to do it? And we talk about logistics, you know, how are we going to get kids to school, how, what are our building schedules going to look like, how do we leverage technology? So like I said, in a few minutes, our, our building leaders and instructional leaders are going to talk about the curriculum and instruction piece, because that's where they've, we've, we've got a lot of work to do, and they have done a lot of the work already. What I like about this graphic here is that the three other, really the foundation of curriculum and instruction and logistics center on health, well-being, and safety. You know, if you look at, you know, like Abraham Maslow's hierarchy of needs, people need to be, feel safe before they can go on to learn and whatnot, so we, the most important critical elements of our reentry plan have to take into account the physical, social, and emotional safety of all of our students, our staff, and our families, people have to be comfortable with, with coming to school, and this has obviously been a big emphasis around the state, I know it was a big emphasis in the, the framework document from Ed Advance. When you're talking about health, you're talking about, you know, the advice of medical professionals, how are we going to, you know, do temperature checks and things like that, hygiene protocols, dealing with contact tracing, when we talk about safety, we're going to look at our actual visitor procedures, custodial cleaning, procurement of PPE, and the big one, I think, is, another big one is, is well-being, knowing that, you know, our kids are struggling emotionally, and we need to be prepared for that, so what are the social and emotional supports that we need to put in place when the, when kids come back in the fall? I said five domains, I kept confusing five domains and six domains, because really, the sixth domain is really the communication around all of that, and it really encompasses all the other domains, you know, just ensuring that we are very transparent as we go throughout the entire process, and make sure that people are, you know, in the know on, you know, what's going to happen as we move forward. So, our diagram kind of breaks off from, and I don't, I don't anticipate being able to read all this other stuff, but, I told you, the, the framing document that we're using has 30 different indicators, we've chunked, we've chunked them up into the six domains, curriculum, instruction, health, well-being, safety, logistics, communication, and then from there, we start to look at the different individual aspects of each one, I'm not going to go into each one of them right now, but what I am going to do is, I'm going to turn it over to Julia Strong, who is going to kick us off on the curriculum and instruction piece, and then I know some other folks are going to chime in when it's appropriate, so just give me a second to get out of this one.
Hi, everyone, I'm Julia. I'm one of the principals at Massey, can you hear me?
We can hear you, just let me know when you need me to change the slides, Julia.
Sure. So, part of my job is doing the scheduling for the building, and you can imagine, I'm one of the people like most waiting for the governor to tell us how many kids can be in a room, and get us moving on all those logistics, and there, there are indeed a lot of things that we can get ready for, but are truly still on hold until we get the governor's guidance, so we are eagerly anticipating that. One thing we did not have to wait on towards the end of the school year was looking back on our interim learning plan, and reflecting on the successes of it, things we want to make sure we retain even going back into the classroom in person, and then challenges that we faced, and, you know, opportunities to revise it if we ever had to do it again. This plan was created really fast, and it was implemented heroically by our teachers. I do want to thank our fine faculty on the record one more time, they went so far towards the students, reaching through the screen almost, not just in the Google classrooms, but with everything, I saw emails from teachers, everything people did, reaching out to kids to engage them, and that work by our teachers became the basis for these surveys, we were reflecting on student engagement, what were the types of activities in distance learning that were the most efficient for student learning from the teacher perspective, the student perspective, and the parent perspective. So, the little bit of time we took at the end of the year to reflect back on interim learning is just groundwork that we're laying going forward into reopen in case we need to make use of these techniques again, and you can see where this all fits in, Joe, if you want to go to the next slide, just that little tiny corner, those two little purple dots, the remote learning techniques, and then also learning loss mitigation, that's a phrase that, you know, we heard this spring about the understanding that distance learning is not the same as in-person, and when we go back to the classroom, we're going to need to adapt where the curriculum would typically start in September to encompass the loss that students had from being at a distance from their teachers during the spring. So you're going to hear from somebody from each of the levels, K5, 6, 8, and 9, 12, about what we learned, and what the implications are for our next steps. So Kelly, you want to report out for elementary?
Sure, good evening, everyone. So, we did, gave the same survey across all three elementary schools, we had 86 teachers participate, which was about 75% of our teachers, and then we had 687 families, so, when we assigned the survey, we had asked families to fill out one per child, so that worked out to be about 49% of our students who had some representation, which in surveys is actually pretty good. So part of what we did in the teacher survey was we asked about student engagement, and so with that, we were basically just seeing engagement, we're not looking at really deeper levels of engagement, we were looking at who was logging on and who was completing the assignments, and so for that, what came back was that pre-recorded lessons was definitely had the most participation, we looked at work posted in the classroom with an assigned due date, so everybody's Google Classroom sort of had assignments on there with a, a due date likely by the end of the day or the end of the week, and that received a lot of engagement and participation, there were third-party websites like iExcel, virtual field trips, which are really fun, not rated as high were live small-group sessions, and also live whole-group sessions, but I would say the data in this is sort of not as valid as we would like to see, because 27 of the 86 teachers surveyed did not offer those, so, you know, they obviously didn't rate it as high engagement, but 59 who did, 58 of the 59 felt it was high to moderate engagement, so I think that is pretty engaging, and then same for the whole-class lessons, we had less people providing those things, all of our teachers, or most of our teachers really did engage to some extent live with students, but the difference here was live instruction, like a lot of the elementary student, teachers provided, you know, a live Google Meet, or checking in on students, or a review session, or things like that, but the difference we were asking about here was actual providing the lesson live. So, also related to this, we had asked parents sort of what they were satisfied about, and part of, parents were really satisfied with a lot of things at the elementary level, they were satisfied with communication from both administrators and teachers, they were satisfied with the amount of work, with the types of work, things like that, and, and one thing that parents did report was sort of craving more of that live instruction, so something we asked both teachers and parents was, if we needed to be on further distance learning and provide live instruction, are you ready? And you see from this graphic that certainly parents and teachers are ready to provide more live instruction, or synchronous learning if needed. So people who, even those who were willing to provide live instruction, or as parents have students receiving it, there were some just questions and considerations, teachers are worried about student privacy, a lot of our teachers, if, if you're providing a Google Meet or a Zoom session or something like that, and you don't have all your students on, you want to record. like that and you don't have all your students on, you want to record that session and then post it to your classroom. And there were some questions about student privacy with that. You know, just having clear expectations and guidelines and equality across the teachers' union was something people were concerned about. More professional development, more teaching tools at home, you know, you see like people doing videos on their like bathroom stall because that's their whiteboard or things like that and just, you know, wanting to have more materials. And then, the age of the students is really a big deal, you know? Providing live instruction to 26-year-olds is not the same as providing live instruction to 29-year-olds. So, that was something that teachers were concerned about. And then, parents, of course, are just worried that, you know, when we were, when we first experienced this pandemic, we had parents who were mostly home. We did have some essential workers who were still going in, but because we were in such a shutdown mode, we had a lot of people who were home. And even then, it was really difficult to support their students depending on what their type of work was or how old their child is. I think people are concerned in the fall, if, if the state's not fully shut down and people are actually working and physically going to work, what does that mean for their children? Could they be in daycare? Maybe they're not home. Maybe they're with another caregiver during the day. So, that's something that people are worried about. And I think synchronous learning also, you know, there's a set time, of course, because it's all the same time. So, if you have to log on at 10:00 AM but you're not available to, does your child miss out? And, and something about the live pre-recorded lessons offers that flexibility for families to engage and log on as they, as fits into their schedule. And then, of course, people just want their kids to go to school and then some did have some discomfort with the technology. So, next six for elementary basically are that, our findings are that there is not a one-size-fits-all method for elementary. You know, when we're talking about elementary, we're talking about preschool through fifth grades. You're talking about three-year-olds through 10-year-olds. I mean, there's a big difference there. We need to continue to provide a variety of tools and learning opportunities. We're not going to be able to do, you know, all of one thing or the other. I think we need to thoroughly communicate with our caregivers and continue to do that. We've been doing a great job and we need to keep that up. And then, I think, you know, as a teacher, you just need to investigate what works well for your students. What worked for your class last year might not be the same thing that's working for your class this coming year. So, that communication would really help you know, you know, what your family's situations are and who needs what. And so, we would like to definitely consider increasing synchronous learning opportunities as appropriate. And in addition to that, we'd like to investigate more social, emotional programming. That was something that came up in the survey too, as parents felt they needed more support in that area. And so, I think we can, we can take a deeper look at that.
Thanks, Kelly.
Yeah. If there's no questions, I think Lee is going to do the, Jackie Hall.
I'm actually going to jump in. It's Laura. So, we also did a survey. It does mirror a little bit of what the elementary school has seen. We did have even representation from both campuses. We had them identify whether they were main campus or STEM, and we did get a nice cross-reference of even representations. That's good. Basically, again, just like in elementary school, we did have recorded video with the posted work. We did have live classes at scheduled times. Those were not as effective. What we found was the posted work with the assigned due dates and then a Google Classroom to help the students connect with their teachers. But we certainly want to get to that synchronous learning. And I do think, just like the elementary school, and we're going to talk about the high school as well, having a specific time that classes are happening, that students need to log in is going to be something that we are looking at. Joe, I think you can go to the next slide. Yeah, so, obviously, 98% of the parents are ready for live and, live learning and having their students sign in at, say, 8 o'clock and have their first class on for a good 45 minutes. And teachers are ready. Students, well, you see that 90%, maybe they're not quite as ready, but, you know, that's middle school for you. As for next steps for the middle school, we combined with Massey. We just looked at a 612 continuum. So, Massey's going to take it away with our next steps at the end of that presentation.
Thanks, Laura.
All right. Hi, Kevin Welch. I'll speak to the data that was collected at Massey High School. First, we surveyed 343 parents. We had 56 teachers respond, which is about 74% of the staff. We had 162 students, which is 16% overall the student population at Massey High School. And the, and the first question we talked about was, what helped your child that you're learning? And all of the eight options that popped up, these are the three that, that received the most percentages. And you'll see a lot of patterns that we saw through elementary and middle school. For the student side, they really liked the posted work with the pre-recorded videos at the, the high percentage, 38.3. Our parents actually spoke more to the, seeing a live class and a scheduled time at 38.8%. It wasn't mandatory for teachers at the high school to go live. So, many of them, you know, chose to do it, but others decided that the option of a pre-recorded video is the best way for them to present the material. But I, but I definitely see, as we look at the next couple of questions, how we're leaning towards going towards more of a live interaction between students and teachers in a, in a scheduled format. So, Joe, if you take a look and go to the next slide, this is an interesting slide because it talks about the biggest obstacles that all parents, students, and teachers saw. And again, there was eight options that they could have selected from, and these were the top three percentage, highest percentage of those options. And it's interesting to see because they all admitted that self-regulation and time management was the highest percentage as the biggest obstacle. And if you look at the teachers, that's, they went over 50% felt that that was an issue. And that really, you know, a lot of students had trouble keeping pace with the work and the due dates during the time they're home in distance learning. The second one was interesting too, because it talks about, you know, understanding material independently. A lot of this work was done at home, looking at videos and really trying to come to some conclusions and understandings of the concepts more as independent and not in a regular classroom. And, and obviously, a lot of students found there was issues with that. And the third one was with loneliness and emotions. These kids were isolated for three months, trying to, you know, really go through their fourth quarter of the material. And there was definitely was loneliness that set in, and, and all three, parents, students, and teachers recognized that. Really, what does the slide say? Really, they all agree that there should be some live interaction between teachers and students, but also really students and students, that they, they're looking for that communication and they're looking for that, that support and help within a live structure if we do go to distance learning sometime within the next school year. If you go to the third one, the third slide talks about really live learning, and it was overwhelmingly in percentages of at least 85 to 90% that parents, students, and teachers are all in favor of some sort of live learning. Parents is almost about 100%. I know students' concern was having the technology. We did a very good job this spring sending, sending Chromebooks home and other technology for the needs of the students. And I'm sure we'll have to continue to think about what we can do to help support their technology needs as we go to some live learning, if we do go to some live learning in the fall. And then, the teachers, who were at 90%, talked about additional discussions. And that's usually centered around, you know, logistics, scheduling, just responsibilities of the students and the teachers, and also really further training that we can provide during some sort of professional development to, to allow them to be able to do more live structured classes during distance learning.
Hi, Ian Lowell again. So, for the next steps at the secondary level, you know, of course, we'd all prefer to go back to school in the fall. We, we miss the teachers, the students. It's, it's pretty much across the board. Everybody would rather be back, but we also know that safety is paramount also. And so, it's important that we at least come up with a, with a plan if we have to be out for a two-week period or a two-month period. And all of this lines up to really try to recreate the formal structure of the school day. You know, if we go back to that slide that Kevin talked about with the three largest concerns, time management, understanding material independently, and loneliness, those are the areas that we want to be able to address directly and specifically. And I think the formal structure of a school day, which means a set schedule, which means live class attendance, which means regular grading, trying our best really to recreate the school day, giving those clear expectations and guidelines. That's really, I think, where, where our head is at at this point. We'd like to do that as much as possible. That increased participation, interaction with a live teacher is not only going to help kids address material, it's so they're not feeling like they have to learn it independently, but it's also going to help them in terms of the loneliness and emotions. They're going to see other students, you know? We understood that in the situation we had this spring, it wasn't always possible for students to log on at given times. But that logging on at, at a specific scheduled time is really going to help with that loneliness factor. It'll also help increase student collaboration, student accountability for their grades and their work. As teachers, we also have to look at, how do we assess? How do we, how do we assess differently when students have full technology available to them in their homes? And of course, last piece would be flexible professional development, just as we did this year, when we implemented the professional development opportunities on certain Wednesdays in the final month. That was really important because it gave teachers the opportunity to get caught up and understand what they needed to do.
Thanks, Ian. Jewel, I know you had one other piece you wanted to share.
Oh, yeah. Thank you, everybody, for reporting out. I just wanted to comment on the high numbers we got about readiness for live instruction, being able to support the student. Just that, that was 90% of families, but it was 90% of families who responded to an email survey on their computer. We still do have a, you know, a substantial group of people that struggled with access to technology and that people on this call spend a lot of time reaching out to and supporting directly. So, I just want us to be excited about the possibilities with, you know, whatever we might do in the future, but to remember that we do have, we do still have folks that we need to provide extra support to, if that's, if that's something we're going to do. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you all for helping put that together. These, this, this team has been, has been really amazing, getting some of this work, you know, front-loaded. So, when we meet as the, the bigger committee, we, we have it broken down into some manageable chunks, but you can tell that was, you know, as we showed in that, in that graphic, this is just one, you know, two small areas in curriculum instruction. And, you know, it involved, you know, literally hundreds of surveys that went out and, you know, got synthesized back. So, there's a, there's a lot of work to do, but, you know, we're up to the task.
Great. Thank you so much. That was a great presentation, very informative to all of us. Does any of the board members have any questions? I'll just go around. Shannon?
No questions. Thank you for a great presentation, very informative. Thank you.
Dave? Okay, Jerry?
No, all set. Thank you. It was very informative. Appreciate it.
Alan?
No questions. So, it was a great presentation.
Christine?
No questions. Great presentation.
Nick?
Just waiting on the governor and see what he says.
And Jeff?
No questions. Thank you for the presentation.
Great. Thank you. Joe, what's the next step? When is the larger committee starting to meet? Are you guys going to try to, are you going to meet and then just work in whatever the governor's edict is? Or are you going to, going to wait until you get something?
No, I mean, we can't wait. So, you know, we've already done quite a bit of preliminary work here. Like I said, you know, this team has been awesome. We've got, we've, we've got the work broken down into much more manageable, you know, like I said, we broke it down into those six domains. And then, from those domains, we've, we've taken the framing document from Ed Advance, which identifies about 30, what we're calling, you know, indicators or buckets. We've put them in each of those domains. And I think we need to start, you know, trying to address them as best we can. And, you know, it's kind of like, you know, this whole thing has gone from day one is, you know, hope for the best and plan for the worst. So, we've got to continue to plan as though, you know, there's a very strong likelihood that at some point next year, we could be in distance learning. So, this, this work is completely, is so valuable. So, we start, I, I know none of these folks have taken any time off. They've been working seven days a week, 24 hours a day. And so, I'm, I'm begging them to take, try to take some time next week, and then we will meet back up and, and start doing this on Wednesday, starting July 1st. So, which is only next Wednesday, but...
Great. Thank you. We will move on to old business. Up first, item A, which is curriculum. We have the new course, which is diverse voices in American history. So, I have a motion to approve the new course of diverse voices in American history as presented. I'm sorry. So, I have so many. I know. So, that, I'll take Dave and Nick because those were the two answers, so, of course. So, I have a motion by David, a second by Nick. Any discussion? I'll just go around. Shannon?
No discussion. Thank you for the committee who put their time into it and for Ian Lowell and the presentation and everybody who put, put time into it. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Shannon. Dave?
Same thing, Ian. Thank you for all your time and all of the extra time that you put into talking to all of us. Great job, and I'm looking forward to moving with this course.
Great. Jerry?
Yeah, I'm gonna cause some trouble here. Hey, Ian, I'm going to ask you an honest question. I know you're going to give me an honest answer because I've known you before. What's changed from when you first presented this to us to what we're looking at now, Ian?
What's changed in the course?
Yeah, anything?
We, I've revised, I've revised the, the course materials a little bit, but that's about it.
Are you okay with that, Ian?
Absolutely.
All right.
I'm confident in the course that I'm presenting.
I, I am too. I didn't know if you were more confident with the first one. That's what I'm trying to ask you.
No, I'm, I'm confident in the course I'm presenting.
Okay. Awesome. All set, Don?
Okay. Alan?
Yeah, great job, Ian. What was changed? Like, what did you revise?
The, the major shift was the original course had African-American history followed by Hispanic history. And this course, I revised it so that they were brought together. So, it's more chronological. So, when we're talking about early America, we're talking about all groups at early America time instead of in the, you know, talking about it chronologically through the African-American experience and then through the Hispanic experience.
Okay.
It actually allowed me to bring in more voices into the curriculum beyond just African-American and Latinx voices. So, I, I think it's a richer course.
I'm just, I'm just glad it's being offered. You know, I have to admit, I was a little shocked when it wasn't on the last agenda. I think, you know, for future reference, if a board member has a problem with a specific class offering, it should probably be hashed out in public.
Great. Thanks, Alan. Christine?
Sorry, my computer froze. You're just asking if you have any questions, right?
Yes.
Yeah, no, I'm good. Thanks.
Okay. Nick?
Yeah, I just wanted to say a couple things. You know, I, I really appreciate what we're doing here. And I think a lot about the, you know, the LGBTQ student or the Black student or the Hispanic student at Massey. And I think just the fact that a class like this is being offered is making a difference. I know that if I was, when I was in high school, that if I saw something like this being offered, that I would feel that my teachers and the administrators are caring about issues like this. I was really, really troubled with the statistics that Ian gave us last, or two meetings ago about the climate survey and that Teresa quoted in her participation, that 42% of non-white students get called mean or offensive names based on their race or skin color, and that 41% of non-heterosexual students think that discrimination based on sexual orientation is a problem. Those are some staggering numbers. And I think that one thing that, I know I'm on my soapbox, just give me 30 more seconds. I think that, you know, students should have a safe and a healthy and a constructive environment to begin exploring where they fit in the world through the lens of the time in which they're living. And I think a class like this really allows students to take what's happening in the current world and learn about it through the lens of history. I mean, when we watch the news, sometimes you just, you feel like all this stuff is getting like just given to you and you just accept it as fact, but you don't really critically analyze it. And I feel like a class like this is a place where you can do that. Not only is it important to know the historical facts of all the things the students are going to learn in this course, but you can apply it to what's happening today because things are happening in our society today daily, daily. Because things are happening in our society today, daily, daily. Eight days ago, in 15 states in this country, you could have been fired without cause just for being lesbian, gay, bisexual, or transgender. Eight days ago. So that's not 50 years ago or 25 years ago. It's a week and a half ago. And things are changing so rapidly. And I think a course like this is a great place for students to start to learn about where they want to fit into society with their role. Um, I think it's so vitally important. I hope more of this stuff comes to us. And I hope we can offer more of this. Because our world is just getting more and more diverse. And I think it's so important for our high school students as they go off into college and the military, into the workforce. And another, Ian, thank you, thank you, thank you so much for all your hard work on this. Uh, very happy to support it. Thank you for, I'm off the soapbox now. Thank you Donna.
All right, thanks Nick. Jeff.
No questions. Thanks Ian for all your hard work.
Great, thank you. All right, so we have a motion by David, a second by Nick, um, to approve the new course, diverse voices in American history as presented. So I'll just go around for a I or a nay. Shannon?
Aye.
Uh, Dave?
Aye.
Jerry?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And I'm an I, so motion passes. Thank you. We'll move on to new business. And first up is item A, which is our MOU with the MEA. So I need, I have a motion. The motion is the Board of Education hereby moves to approve the memorandum of understanding with the Monroe Teacher Association that was discussed in executive session relating to concessions by the association. The Board further moves to delegate to the Board Chair the authority to execute the memorandum on behalf of the Board. So moved. Do I have a, do I have a motion? To, thank you David and Nick. I saw them first, sorry Jerry.
Oh, no problem.
Um, Joe, would you like to start the discussion? You want me to start the discussion?
I'm fine to start the discussion and I, I haven't had a chance to, um, I haven't had a chance to see if Bill Bittar or Brian Gilly are on. But if they are on, you know, I just, I really hope that they, they capture what's happening here today. Uh, I really cannot thank the, uh, the MEA, the leadership team of the MEA and the entire organization for ratifying this MOU and giving us, you know, some relief with our budget, which, you know, is being done to, you know, do what we, what is our mission and that's to do what's right for kids. And, you know, by, by doing this, we get some relief and we can avoid some of the reductions in programming that, that we talked about earlier. This, this MOU, basically the teachers have agreed to a, to taking up to three furlough days in the 2021 school year. Those days would include Monday, March 15th, 2021. There just needs to be one little minor edit on the MOU because it says 2020. And then the last two instructional days of the 2021 school year. Like I said, three, uh, three furlough days, so their salaries will be, you know, reallocated. You know, one, one eighty-seventh for each of those three days. There is a clause in here, if, um, if we are to get, um, you know, money back from some, you know, if we, if we are able to realize some sort of a saving somewhere, um, that we will make every effort to reinstate those furlough days um, as regular teaching days, starting with the last student days and then the March 15th professional development day. But a- again, the, the biggest thing I just want to say is, you know, this is gonna save us, you know, considerable amount of, it's gonna realize us some considerable savings um, and really help us to avoid, um, you know, some cuts that were gonna really impact our kids. And I, I really, again, I can't thank the, um, the MEA for being such great partners. I don't know of another town in Fairfield County. I, I went to a retirement party for a superintendent on Friday and people were amazed that, you know, our group was willing to do this. And, um, you know, I, I, I'm thankful. I'm not necessarily amazed because we have great people in this town. Uh, and great teachers in our, uh, in our district.
Great, thank you Joe. Yeah, I'll just reiterate Joe's sentiments that we are very grateful to our MEA leadership and also all the teachers in the MEA who did ratify this agreement last week. Um, and come to the table to us because certainly they did not need to come to the table and help us out with any of these concessions um, to mitigate all of these reductions that we are facing. So we do appreciate, um, they stepping up and, and doing that. And we do acknowledge that that certainly did, is not the norm and certainly does not, they, they did not need to do that. Um, so we have this on the agenda and this, as we spoke about it earlier during Joe's superintendent presentation, this, um, this will mitigate five of the positions that we have on that reduction list. I know we said them before, but they're marked, it's marketing at the high school. It's the culinary program at the high school. It is the music program, which reinstates or does, you know, reinstates fifth grade band. Not that we actually eliminated it, but it, you know, we will keep fifth grade music, sorry. That's fifth grade music, not just bands, but it's band and orchestra. Um, and then two of the reading t- uh, teachers. So, um, do, does anybody else have anything, any other comments for this? I'll just go around Shannon.
Yeah, a huge part, well, thank you to the MEA, to the, to the teachers in the town. This is one of the things that's, uh, just kind of resonates, what's so unique about Monroe. You don't, you don't find this everywhere. Um, they put, they put the kids first and they put the, the district first. Um, and it's, it's greatly, greatly recognized and appreciated very much. I hope we can, um, continue moving forward, working together like this. Just as far as, um, you know, everybody working together to put the kids first. And, uh, they didn't have to do what they did. And I think so.
Great, thanks Shannon. Dave?
Uh, the same sentiment. Thank you very much Jeff and MEA and, um, and the other unions that we're speaking with. And I'll, I'll leave it at that, but same appreciation.
Thank you. Jerry?
Yeah, the, I mean, you know, once again, the MEA has shown that this is a gigantic partnership. And I, I, I thank them so much. And, um, it's about, and Shannon, I'd like to echo your words. Thank you.
Great, thanks Jerry. Alan?
Uh, no comment.
Uh, Christine?
Uh, nope, no questions.
Okay, Nick?
Yeah, I just want to say, I feel like this, you know, this whole year in public education, I don't have to tell anybody here, but it's been probably the wildest year ever. And for our teachers, I feel like it's the third hit, right? So the first one was, we all had to go to that town council meeting. We had 50 people in the audience to make sure the contract passed. Then the teachers had to transition to online and we all had to figure that out together. And now we have to say, oh, by the way, we have to look back at what we did. And it, it, you know, as Joe said, you, you want to say how amazing this group of people is, but we have some of the best in Monroe. And it's just, you know, we couldn't have done this without them. And we're able to now put these teachers back and put culinary back and put marketing back. Um, it's, it's such good news in sometimes really trying times. So thank you again to the MEA.
Great, thank you. And Jeff?
Uh, no questions. Just a special thanks to our teachers.
Great, thank you. All right, so I have a motion by Dave and I think it was a second by Nick, um, to vote on this, um, MOU with the MEA. Um, so I'll just go around Shannon.
Aye.
Uh, Dave?
Aye.
Jerry?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
And I'm an I, so that motion passes. Thank you so much, everybody. Item B is, um, something called an Under Armour contract. And Joe, is John going to talk about this or are you gonna talk about this?
I'll, I'll give you a quick, uh, high level overview. And John, if I, John's on, if, John, if I leave any of this stuff out, um, you know, feel free to, feel free to jump in. John and I talked about this a little bit. But basically the Under Armour contract, um, you know, is a contract between MASC and Under Armour, uh, asking us to use our best efforts to use Under Armour for our sports apparel and uniform needs. Um, what do we get out of it? Um, we get a pretty significant discount, about 40% off on any apparel, accessories, uniforms. Um, we have bought Under Armour uniforms in the past. And even, um, without the discount, they've come in under budget. So this has an opportunity for us. Um, there's also a bit of a rewards component to the, uh, to the program where each calendar year, we'll be given a $5,000 credit to purchase items. Um, one caveat is that does not include uniforms, but, um, there's plenty of other stuff. I know, um, John gets, you know, T-shirts, has awards for kids. Um, it would allow us to get, um, site apparel for some of our site workers. So they're easily identifiable at games. Uh, it'll allow us to get our coaches apparel at a, either, you know, either free or a much more discounted rate. You know, so, you know, it's a pretty good program. If we, uh, you know, if we sell additional stuff through, you know, the Booster Club or some of the other organizations, uh, we get 10% back on the difference of any purchases over $50,000. So say for example, in a given year, we did $60,000 worth of sales. Uh, we'd get a thousand dollars back and you could use that money again for apparel and, you know, gear for kids and whatnot. John, did I miss any, uh, any highlights there?
Uh, no, Joe, uh, no Joe, thank you very much. You summed it up pretty well. I, I think it's a, it's a great opportunity to enhance the athletic department with no, uh, uh, addition air, additional budgetary issues with respect to an increasing the budget and providing some of the things that, uh, I've, I've been looking to provide, but just didn't have funds for uh, over the last five, 10 years or so, especially one of the things, you know, uh, these last couple of years, we're trying to implement a three-sport athlete program. Whereas something, you know, just to, you know, I think it's a significant achievement for any athlete, student athlete. But, you know, something like a, a nice T-shirt program where they get it and it becomes something of practice. Something that, that I had not had the money to purchase. Uh, this some, this is something that, uh, we could get. It's maybe one of the items that we could get with no, uh, uh, budgetary, uh, additional funds for our budget. And as Joe said, we bought Under Armour uniforms last year under budget for our girls volleyball team. They're pretty good. Uh, they're very good, very pleased with themselves. We've had experience with them and it said they are different, uh, pretty significant discounts that we could get.
Great, thank you. Um, so I'll, I'll ask for a motion and then a second and then we can open this up for discussion. So I have a motion to approve the Under Armour contract as presented.
Aye.
Okay, uh, that was Jeff and Nick. Um, do I have discussion on this? Does anybody have questions? So I'll just go around Shannon.
I don't.
Okay, Jerry?
Nope, all set.
Alan?
Uh, no, all set.
Okay, Christine?
No.
Uh, Dave, did I miss you?
Yeah, but that's okay. It's not the first time. I think it's a great opportunity. Um, thank you John, uh, for putting it together. You know, wherever we can save money with an American company, let's do that. So good job.
Okay, Nick?
Oh, thank you John.
And Jeff?
Yeah, just a quick question to John about the, just the uniform stuff. It, does it, I can't, I didn't know if I heard you correctly. It, does it obligate us to purchase, uh, Under Armour uniforms for all our athletes moving forward?
It, it's our, our best efforts to do so. So, uh, there were a couple things, uh, this year that we're gonna buy that we were obligated to buy from last year, uh, with, with other deals. But for the most part, we're gonna go with Under Armour for our uniforms.
Anything else Jeff?
Nope.
Okay. All right, so I have a motion by Jeff and a second by Nick, um, to approve the Under Armour contract as presented. So I'll just go around for the vote. Shannon?
Aye.
Uh, Dave?
Aye.
Jerry?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And I'm an I, so motion passes. Thank you, everybody. We will move on to item C and that is a joint finance proposal. Um, a First Amendment vote anticipated. Um, so, uh, Joe, do you want to talk about this and then we'll do the motion?
Sure, this is, yep, yep, this is, uh, just a, a simple extension. When we, uh, um, when we, um, kidnapped Ron about six months ago, um, you know, we, we were hoping to form a, at least explore a partnership with the town where we could look at a shared joint finance director position and, you know, hopefully find some efficiencies with that. Um, I, I don't think, you know, it goes without saying that you probably could not have picked a worse time in American history to try to, to try to do that. Um, I have to, uh, you know, I say it to everyone I know. I have tremendous remorse for the amount of work that Ron, uh, does for, uh, for the Board of Ed. And then I know what he goes on to do for the town. I want to thank Ron, uh, for that. Um, basically what this MOU does is this just says that we are looking to, uh, extend this partnership up to, um, six more, approximately six more months. So it'd have a termination date of, of January 21st, 2020. Um, it just extends the, uh, the current MOU that we have with them. Knowing that there is work to do and that we, um, we've gotta, um, start to, you know, uh, put up our, you know, our human resources structure up here uh, in a way that we can start to do this work in a, in a more manageable way. And I know there's, um, there's some concern that, you know, we gotta get some people into positions to make it, you know, as manageable as possible, especially, uh, for Ron and the entire, uh, finance department. It doesn't totally obligate us for the six months. Um, because there is a clause in the original memo that says that either party, the Board of the Town could dissolve, you know, could, um, you know, could end the contract with it, or end the MOU with 30 days notice. So, um, I've heard pretty loud and clear from, from a few people that, you know, we need to figure out exactly where we want to go with this position, um, you know, moving forward and, um, it's about it.
Thank you. So I have a motion to approve the, um, joint finance proposal, First Amendment as presented.
I will.
Thank you Dave. Do I have a second?
I do.
Uh, thank you Jeff. All right, discussion. I'll just go around Shannon.
Um, no, I know we're, we would, uh, all like to probably, no, probably more so than Ron, maybe, try to get this resolved sooner than later. But like, uh, like we had said before, it was a really rough six months to evaluate anything of normalcy. So the situation is what it is. Hopefully we have an answer sooner than later. And I appreciate the, uh, you know, we have the time that we need. So we're not voting yet, but that's my, are we voting now?
No, I, well, I mean, we usually go through discussion first, then we do a vote, so.
I have an, I'm an I if you, if that's that.
Okay. All right, but, well, we don't even have a mo, no, no, we have a motion, right? Yes, thank you. Um, yeah, Dave?
I think it makes sense to extend it. Uh, it's working out. Um, Ron and his team have done a phenomenal job, so thank you for all of that. And, um, Joe, as we push this forward, um, I'll volunteer to assist, um, to get those thoughts and, and, uh, some finality to this.
Excellent.
Thanks Dave. Um, Jerry?
Uh, you know, Ron, you, you've done an incredible job. It's just, I feel you're between a rock and a hard, hard place and I wish you just would have chosen us. But anyway, I, I do understand it.
Well, Ron, do you want to say anything in your own, like, defense? Since this agreement is actually about you?
Is, you know, I, um, you know, I'll just reiterate what, uh, Joe said earlier. It was just tough to, uh, evaluate it, um, you know, over the past six months with, you know, five months with what we went through. So, um, yeah, I'll, I'll just leave it at that. I mean, yeah, you, you know, there are days where it's tough and, and, you know, I'm, uh, but, you know, working for, uh, Joe and Ken, um, I've got team, great teams on both sides, so, um, you know. I've got team, great teams on both sides, so, um, you know, it's, it's probably not an ideal situation, but it's, um, you know, I, I think we're, you know, a lot of hard work. We're making it work, you know? But there's, there's certainly some work to be done.
Great, thanks, Ron. I appreciate that. Um, Alan?
Um, I wish Ron would stay with us. Um, I mean, he's like the Mickey Mantle of, uh, finance people.
That's true.
No. Maybe if we, uh, find incriminating photographs, um, about him, we could, uh, force him to stay.
I had a mute there because I was laughing, so. Let's, well, let's hope not, poor Ron. Let's hope not, no.
He's running out the door.
Alright, anything else, Alan?
That's it.
Alright, Christine?
No, I have to follow Alan with all those comments. Um, no, thanks for all your hard work, Ron. We appreciate it. And stay on the Board of Ed side.
Absolutely. Nick?
Um, yeah, just a couple things. Um, I was doing a logo for Draft Ron on like Zazzle, no kidding. I would have, keep him on the Board of Ed side. But, um, yeah, I, I am a little concerned about this extension. Um, you know, I understand that we've been in the midst of COVID and the budget crisis, but I think that the upcoming budget, unfortunately, I think that the upcoming budget is gonna be even worse than the budget we just went through because of all the unknown unknowns and what's, what the expenses are gonna be. Um, I'm also worried about one person taking on so much for the town and the BOE. And this is not talking about Ron. I'm talking about the position. Um, if you look at the timetable of auditing and the budget and how the directors of finance of both sides go through the budget workshops and town side and then the referendum and preparation, to me, it just seems insurmountable for one person, um, to take this on. And I'm not saying that a joint department couldn't work in the future, but I think that the January fifteenth date in the extension doesn't hold the Board of Ed accountable enough. I wanna be held more accountable. Um, I was thinking, just a personal observation, that October, early October would be a better date to put in instead of January, because if we wanna extend it again, it forces us to come back here and have this conversation. This is an extremely important position in central office. I don't have to say that to anybody. Everybody knows that. Um, I've said it time and time again, that I don't think we'd be in as good of shape as we are if it wasn't Ron doing both jobs. But at some point, I think it gets, there's, there is so, so, so much work to do on both sides. Um, especially with budget coming up and everything else that, that runs on the day-to-day. Um, uh, just looking over my notes. Um, so anyway, I, I, I don't think that the January fifteenth date holds us accountable enough. Um, Joe, along with David, I'd be happy to help in getting this wrapped up as we go through the summer. I know that, uh, it's the summer, it's COVID, we're on Zoom, we're doing things like this. Um, but I want, I wanna be held more accountable. Um, and so I, I won't be able to support the extension as it's written tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Uh, Jeff? We may have lost Jeff.
Nope, sorry, nope, unmute. You think I would have figured this out by now, but no comments. Thank you.
Alright, no problem. Alright, we will go around then to vote on the joint finance proposed First Amendment. Uh, Shannon?
Aye.
Uh, Dave?
Aye.
Jerry?
Aye.
Um, Alan?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
Nick?
Opposed.
Uh, Jeff?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, motion passes. Thank you, everybody. Uh, we are up to item number eleven, which is adjournment, but is, does anybody have anything that we may have missed before we move to that? Alright, hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn? Shannon and Jerry is the second. All in favor? Shannon, aye. Jerry, just raise your hand.
Aye.
Christine and Jeff, yep.
Aye.
Alright, so that's, uh, unanimous vote to adjourn. So we are adjourned. Thank you so much, everybody. And just, uh, quick, we will have another meeting, probably, hopefully, next Monday to vote on the reductions once we have everything else in, in place.
Thank you, all.
Thank you.